Call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved. Review of the minutes from July 11th, 2022, the draft meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the July 19th, 2022 draft special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Any open public comment?
Hi, my name is Charlotte Firestone and today I went to drought.gov and I saw that the US drought monitor, which is updated every Thursday, says that most of Rutland County is abnormally dry. Last week was the same and last month in Proctor was the same. So I'm wondering how we can have such increased mosquito activity to warrant weekly spraying? I just wanted to say that.
You're asking why we have weekly?
On the weekly? We're in drought.
Yeah, there's bugs.
No bugs.
Yeah, there's bugs.
Not, are there?
Yeah, they're...
Around Beaver Pond, it's bad.
I was at the meeting the other day and one of their traps, they had over a thousand mosquitoes in one of the traps in a 24-hour period.
So these are the people that are selling the spray or also doing the trapping?
No.
Are they affiliated?
No. The, well, the trapping is done by the mosquito district and I assure you, they wouldn't be doing that because the state regulates, you've got to have so many in the trap before they can spray. And they, this is monitored very closely and...
Where are they reaching though?
Yeah, there's no mosquito, definitely no mosquitoes where we are. I haven't been able to go in shorts for the first time in Vermont since, I think I've been here. I mean, I'm comfortable in shorts every day. I get in and out wherever I go.
We just sprayed last Tuesday and went, and we had the concert in the park on Wednesday and there were bugs still flying around.
Yeah.
I find sometime when there's lower water levels that there's more bugs. Like when the things get just like muddy, saturated, dry, there's a lot more mosquitoes than there are when it's like a fresh water flow going through the system and stuff. So, I don't know, drought people probably know more than I do.
Yeah, they, the state watches this very closely and they wouldn't be spraying because they've been using a lot of the chemicals and they'd rather not, yeah. And they'll be spraying tonight, of course, again, so.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Seems every town meeting night they, they spray. You know, every board meeting, every two weeks. About 10:00, 10:30, up around Beaver Pond anyway. But you can opt out, you know that, right? You did?
They still spray all around, you know, you can smell it in our area.
It's kind of hard not to hit someone's...
They come up to our neighbors, I guess our neighbor's like painting them on the side or something. They come up to his place and just back up there and go, "Waaahhh", and leave the truck sitting still for a long time and then just like gas and gas and gas and gas and while they're just sitting there. I don't know what's going on there, but it's kind of weird.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? No? Okay. Guest, we have Sheriff Fox for the Rutland County Sheriff's Office.
Hey Sheriff Fox. So I've invited Sheriff Fox here just because I know for a period there we had an uptick in, in crime, people sneaking into people's cars. I've received a lot of complaints about speeding lately and the Rutland County Sheriff's Office was, was kind enough to put the sign down there on North Street. I hope that's helped a little bit. So I've invited Sheriff Fox here just to kind of give us an overview of what this year might look like for us. We're under a new contract, what kind of threats and opportunities we have.
Just to touch on the curb thefts that we, well, the whole county was actually experiencing the same rad of issues. There was, there's been an arrest made on an individual and since then they've kind of tailed off for the most part. We kind of had an idea it was a primary group of three or four people that were doing it and they, one of them's been incarcerated for, I think it's like three weeks now, maybe. So that's kind of leveled off some. When that release happened, which I'm sure, well, at some point, I don't know if that'll go back to their ways of getting into unlocked vehicles or not, but you know, the word to pass on is just to lock your car because we never had any cases where windows were smashed. It was always unlocked vehicles. And all the videos that we have are, you know, someone would go up and check the door and if the door was locked on the car, they just moved on. They weren't trying to force themselves into the vehicle in any way. And then thefts of motor vehicles were people had left keys in them. So somebody would park in their yard and leave the key in it around the side, around the side of the street and they would easy access to take that vehicle and they weren't damaging them, they were driving them around to do other breaks or in cars, but you know, so we had quite an uptick in motor vehicle thefts as well. So the key is the lockup. That is pretty much a deterrent for them. I said they weren't smashing, so it's a good piece of advice, the lockup. If you have, like, when you get a speed complaint, you can just forward it to me so I can let the guys know we're focused. If somebody has shown some issue with an increase. And if you can get a timeframe, that's great and we can focus, you know, rather than spending two or three hours there. If it's just a block, about 45 minutes or an hour in the morning or evening, try to focus our control there on that time.
Okay.
Keep the best bang for our money.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can I ask a question regarding, when somebody breaks into your car, let's say it's unlocked, what do you charge them with? It's probably a lot less than if they actually broke into the vehicle?
Yeah, if, if they force entry, that's, that's a different, different break into the lock. You know, this is just a F-12 vehicle, so they're not actually, you know, smashing, so.
So it's not, it's more of Mr. Vina?
Yeah, it is for the, for the F-12, probably motor vehicle. And the primary target then is a loose chain or give cars or anything they could grab easily to, to go and get money for for a holiday and we didn't expect it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Sheriff Fox, how many towns are you guys under contract with right now in the county?
We currently now are, it's 14. I picked up two new ones this year. So we've got 14 towns in total.
Okay.
Varied, varied hours, anywhere from four hours a week to 40 hours a week.
It's a lot of coverage.
How many officers do you think you're, how many vacant positions you got?
Vacancies right now, I'm running about three. We're covering what we have. Three extra would make it much nicer when we have, to work around deep times or, you know, when people are out on a train or something, that, but we're holding steady on what we have. That's a good sign.
That's good. It's all I have.
How long does it take the train?
The, for us, if it's a level two certified officer, it takes roughly four to five months to get that person where they can actually work on their own. If they go further on to a level three, that takes about eight months. It's not a quick process, you know, we have our background investigation at the beginning and then start in a training program and then a program through our office as well to train.
Lisa?
So August 31st is the first day of school and I know we've gone through this around, around several years, but it would be nice if you could put that on your agenda.
What was the first day again? I'm sorry.
August 31st is the first day of school and it would be nice to see officers during dismissal time rather than at, let's say, 10 o'clock in the morning, which is historically kind of good when they show up. Students historically get driven to school, particularly the first day, but ultimately walk or sort of dismissed.
You have a concert that night too.
Busy day.
Slip plug.
Does that mean summer's over?
I guess so. So lunch is around. Anybody else have questions for Sheriff Fox?
No.
All right.
Okay, well, like I said, Mike, if you get this stuff, pass it along to me and we'll, you know, focus on the areas that you're having concern with and try to narrow that down as we do.
I think I've gotten a good bit on East Street lately. I've had quite a few complaints. And I ride my bicycle in the mornings and I do see people scoot pretty good through there. We're actually putting a new radar sign along Route 3 coming in from Rutland, so we hope that helps a little bit, especially where you're going from 55 to 25 in Harbee. So, but we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten the other side of town covered.
Is that able to read up past 100? So if I go over 100 miles an hour, it'll just show like 105.
I don't think it gave you the high score.
High score.
We have ours, everyone doesn't do that. It records internally, but it doesn't, it doesn't display it though, so.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, very much. I guess I'll go the other way then.
All right. But Shaw from the Vice Chair, House Committee on Transportation.
Well, thank you and thank the Board and Town Manager for inviting me here tonight. I live in Pittsburgh. I've lived in Pittsburgh since 1968, moved now from Middlebury. My wife, Mary, and I have a one child, Dana, that some of you know, probably terrorized Proctor when he was in high school, but that's very cool. So, but I know, I know many of you here and many of you don't, but why am I here? As, as you know, many of you know, we went through our bicentennial redistricting in the legislature this year. 10 years ago, I represented Pittsburgh and Sudbury in the legislature, got redistricted in 2012 to include Brandon. So I was in a two, I've been in a two-member district with Brandon, Pittsburgh and Sudbury over the last 10 years. This year, the push in the legislature and the Legislative Apportement Board was to set up single-member districts instead of two-member districts, which I appreciate. And so we, we landed on, the legislature landed on Proctor and Pittsburgh as a single-member district. Never give a politician a microphone and a camera. It's, it's dangerous. But, but I want, I have met with Michael and once, and I promise to do some stuff for him, I'm going to have results of my promises in my hand. But just for me, I don't want to make this a campaign speech, but I just wanted to let you know the type of services that, that we all can do for you folks and what we have. And in my, my case, I've served my first 11 years at the legislature on the Committee on Corrections and Institutions where we did state buildings and prisons and all that really neat stuff. And I was Vice Chair six years. Then I moved to Transportation the last session and was appointed Vice Chair of that committee. I serve in the Joint Justice Oversight for the last nine years where we keep track of the, the justice system throughout Vermont and the correction system during the off-session. I'm in a, this is neat, I'm in a judicial, Joint Judicial Retention Committee. In Vermont, judges are rotated. Every six years they're reappointed and there's eight members in the legislature, they interview the judges and look at their case law and see how they did and do those kind of things. And then we either recommend or not recommend these judges be reappointed. And I've served on that committee. I'm the Joint Committee on the Operation in the State House as a member. I'm the Chair of the Rutland County Legislative Delegation. I am the Commissioner representing Vermont for the Northeast Forest Fire Protection Commission, which is just not forest fires. It involves us, six New England states, New York State, Long Island and six Canadian provinces. It's big on forest health. So beyond, Vermont doesn't get the total benefit of forest fires because we don't have those big forest fires like you see on TV here. They do in Canada, they do in Quebec, but we don't see those here. But what we benefit from here is forest health, i.e. if you have a problem in your town forest and there's, say, there's something taken over in your forest, you can go to the State Department Fish, Department Forest and Parks and they can help you manage the pest that's in that. And, and if they don't have enough help, they just did a big cut down in the city forest and they brought in people from Quebec to help them cut some of that red pine out down in, down in the city. Those are the kind of things that committee does. And finally, I'm on the canvassing committee where we certify the elections every two years to make sure, to make sure the election was conducted properly and all the votes were counted. So I, I'm ready, should be, well, elected or re-elected, I'm ready to serve Proctor with the same commitment and energy and compassion that I've served Brandon, Pittsburgh and Sudbury for the last nine years. Yeah. And before that, Pittsburgh and Sudbury. It's a, it's not a career job, but it's a great job. And I like, I like interacting with people. I like providing constituent services. That, for me, that's the most important job. You all are individually my constituents, but the town is also my constituent. And I can help you navigate state government. Just about the time we all think we've got state government figured out, something happens and we turn the ball over on the other side and, and it's a new day. That's, that's what I like to do. I pride myself in helping you through the grant process. Of all the myriad of grants that are available for all the towns, doing highway grants, between recreation grants, between facilities grants, i.e. if you needed an elevator in this building or whatever, there's a grant available for that. And I'm, I'll say this to you folks in Proctor, because you have the Proctor Fund, it doesn't matter, you still should apply for these grants. Like at the skating rink and up on the hill, there's grants available to help you improve those, those facilities. And I can work with Michael and help lead you through the process of that grant, program. But that's an important part for me, to make sure that everybody's represented. So short of a campaign speech and a wave and a flag, I won't do that tonight because we're not even at the primary level yet. But I'm hoping to be able to represent the town of Proctor in the future. And I've been over here a lot. I've, I've served under Pittsburgh Fire Department for 53 years, 30 years as Assistant Chief. Spent a lot of time in Proctor, quality time in Proctor. I've been a Justice of the Peace in Pittsburgh since 1973. I guess that makes me old and stubborn. So, so with that, I did have a meeting with, with Michael a couple, three weeks ago. We had a great discussion. We've talked a lot about the transportation bill and what's in it. As an example, I read today, there's another covered bridge in Lindenville got hit again this week and did damage to that. And then I read that Smugglers Notch, the day after the transportation bill was signed, a truck got stuck in the notch. We've increased the penalties for those covered bridges. There's things that the town needs to do to protect your covered bridge, but the fine for that now instead of $200, if you hit that, is $2,000.
Good.
Plus, we also made it easier for the towns to recover expenses on the repairs. That language is in the T-Bill. That's 73 pages of very nice reading. You'll, we can go to, go to bed at night, go to sleep very quickly. But I also bring the state budget from Michael's purview because to read this, you have to have this. Because this is the money, this is the words. So with that, thank you for having me here. I can talk mosquitoes anytime you want to talk mosquitoes because I've been, I have worked a lot with the mosquito district over the years for funding and helping them through the process of doing simple things like blocking out areas and understanding how they test and why they test and where they test and where mosquitoes come from. And so we've learned all those type of things and more than happy to share that kind of information. So with that, I want to give this to Michael. Have fun.
I'll, I'll come back over. I'll get you a sign.
But I'll gladly come back over and work with you on that, to run the two documents together so you can see how it affects the town with structures grants and class two, class two grants and regular highway grants. And the money, how the money meets the words. If there's no questions, I'll sit back down and listen to the rest of your meeting.
Anybody have questions?
Do we need to do anything for covered bridge damage?
Yes. The bill talks about signage. The agency is working on a signage package. They will come down and they'll rate your bridge for, for weight. Pardon? Oh, in, in Linden, they, they clipped the rafters again.
Oh, okay.
Just like, just like over here when they clipped the rafters. So that, that's happening, but they're, they're going to suggest a sign package for you to make sure that you have the right weight on your bridge. If you've, as an example, we have a bridge in Pittsburgh that's on a 24,000-pound road, but the bridge is rated 60,000 pounds. So there's a little incongruity with that. You've heard that West Rutland had to close a bridge over there. It's on a 24,000-pound road, but the bridge is posting 60,000 pounds.
So are you talking about the bridge on LeFolhala?
Yeah, on the west one. So we're, we're trying to clear those things up and the bill helps, helps with that. And those are the kind of things that sometimes you miss if you're, if you're not immersed in it. So I think there's some good, good language in the bill to help you. The state is developing this, the state, AOT is developing the sign package now, some things like the weight turnaround here, you know, those type of things. Hopefully they'll work way better than the stop, don't drive in this road signs we put up, what, six or eight years ago for overweight trucks. So with that.
Well, thank you.
I hope to be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Pardon?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll leave some cards to Michael. You know, I don't have a, I don't have a district yet, so, but just got my old district down, but anybody can feel free to get ahold of me. I'll answer any questions or refer you to whomever you need to go to. And I don't have a date by because I love to run out because I knew who was going to be on the street. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good stuff. We had our first concert last Wednesday. It was slightly well-attended, lots of kids, which is great. They had a great time. A lot of kids, little kids dancing and stuff. So our next one is August 3rd in the park, so.
Cool.
And also I just want to give kudos to the pool people because I, Lisa, Gannon, everybody's been doing a great job up there and you've heard only positive stuff. So I think that's fantastic for the pool.
And DPW did a really good job getting rid of the trees that came down at Beaver Pond Road, cleared it nicely too.
I'll pass it on to them.
Yes, please do.
I did learn today that even though we have leeches up there, that leeches have 32 brains, so we're not messing with something simple. So.
Leeches have 32 brains? Not 32 legs, 32 brains?
Okay, Highway Department, the milling and paving to begin August 8th.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add. This, this is more or less just a public notice that on Gibb and Taylor Hill and Bluff, we're going to be our, doing our annual summer paving. I met with Will today for a site visit to do the dig tickets. And they're also going to repair Florence for us. It's going to be invoiced differently because it's, we're using emergency funds, but it sounded like they're going to piggyback off the quote that they gave us for the annual summer work. That's all I have to add for the paving.
Marble Bridge upgrades.
You might notice that the lamppost bases are missing from the bridge. We got those removed, removed and took them to HQ powder coating in White Hall. The owner of that business has been on vacation, but he should be back this week and he's going to give me a quote for sandblasting and powder coating the structures. And we're getting back and hopefully get them back on there, get the bridge looking nice.
They were the only ones that stressed interest, right?
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of powder coat companies.
Yeah.
I think the only other one was in Burlington. And that was also, we, you know, like I said, the last meeting, we went to LaFons, but they suggested let it be powder coated because it might last a little bit longer than, than what they would do.
Solicitation for tree removal?
And I got the last bid today for tree cutting and we budget 8,000 for this annually. The final bid was McCullough and he just gave me a verbal amount. So you've, you've got here a quote from Trees Inc., Valencourt and McCullough. And for all the, for all the trees that we want to remove, Trees Inc. came, came in at about 14,000, Valencourt came in at 17,000 and McCullough told me I could probably do them all for 8,000. So since we only budgeted 8,000, we've got to make some tough choices here. Some people aren't going to get their trees cut because we'd be way over budget. I've kind of singled out two that could probably be passed on to next year. And I think maybe we could save stump grinding for next year. So I, so in your, in your packet here that I've added today, you've got the top tabulation that accounts for all the trees and the bottom tabulation, which I think are the trees that we could get away with cutting this year. And we could go with McCullough who thinks he can do all those for 8,000, or we can go with Trees Inc. who was the next highest bidder at 8,900, who have, who has given us a written quote and has been pretty clear about what they can do. I'll tell you about the trees that I've said that we could probably wait till next year to do. 1820 Patch is a really big oak tree that's kind of leaning over a shed, but does, it looks like it might have a little bit of life in it, but it's just a massive tree. So it's going to take a lot of work and cranes to take it down. I think that could probably wait till next year. And then the other one was a request from Five, well, Five Gorham Bridge Road. It's two bunch pines. They're not in great shape, but I don't think they're going to come down in the next year.
I, when I got my house, I had Trees Incorporated come in and do some work. And they, I got an estimate and anyway, when they came and did the work, their hours and the equipment that they charged me for were totally different. And there was no way, I didn't really have time to mess with them to try to get everything adjusted. So keep an eye on them if you go with them to like make sure that they're, you know, doing what they said they're going to do.
Who was that?
Trees Incorporated, yeah. They charged me for a machine that was much bigger than when they used and for a lot more time than they actually spent.
Make a motion to go to a little better McCullough's.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can order to McCullough. So for the 8,000, are we going to see whatever he can do this year?
I, I know that I made that a bit confusing, but there are quite more trees on there than I thought there would be. I picked this up kind of halfway after John's departure. So so McCullough thinks that he can, he hopes to get them all down. He just couldn't promise 1820 Patch. He wasn't really doing them like the others were quoting them. The others were quoting per tree and McCullough was saying 8,000 bucks for two days of work and then those two days I think I can take all these trees down. So it was quite a difference in, yeah. He seems motivated, like a motivated guy. Marine, ex-marine, but.
So then all of them would be a priority and put those other two as a secondary just in case he couldn't get to them?
Correct. So he's going to, he's going to do his best to get the patch and Gorham. He just couldn't promise it under 8,000.
Is there anything else under highway? Anybody have questions, comments?
One question. I don't know anything about the situation, but I'm sad to see that John's, when you mentioned John's departure, I saw that he wasn't on the, you know, next hour. I was just wondering if you could comment on that at all about this, what happened and, or anyone.
Not, not in an open meeting, I don't think, because. Excuse me? We here. Oh, that's nice. Okay. Is there a motion to go on highway into the Board of Water? Is there a motion to go out of Highway and into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Credit Supervisor Report.
So for those new to the meeting, I'm serving as credit supervisor, so I make the agreements to the delinquencies. And I'm also helping people who have a rear edge over $750 seek help from the state. My memo's in your packets, or my report is in your packets. And delinquencies are down approximately $10,000 from this time last month. And there are eight pending BHAP applications right now totaling about $19,000. I wasn't unable to research older agreements, like I said I was going to do at our last meeting. The workload has picked up a little bit, so I am, I'm going to really do my best to get to those over the next two weeks or three weeks. And because I do see a trend, if you look at the old, last month's report to this month's report, a lot of monthly payments weren't made. And like I said, I think they're just a little loose, so if we can go through them and try to tighten them up a little bit more, then we might get a little bit of structure to the payments and be able to, and I'll be able to provide you better reports that way to make sure people are paying them in a timely manner.
And I assume, because several of these larger ones, that they don't have the shut off available at this point, like there's no shut off without putting one on, just because some are obviously a few years old.
Yeah. And that's going to be the process of going through those agreements, too. I just don't know if, I don't know what their agreements look like.
Right.
So whether they're paying once every two months or.
Okay.
So once I get into those, and if they do have curb stops, you know, we establish a new agreement with them under our new format and start from there. So provide them that opportunity. And 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 I've, I've already met with DPW about this, and they understand that it is the goal of the board and a goal myself to install these curb stops where needed when when the time comes on a monthly basis if it need be.
Anybody have questions? Okay. Source Protection Plan Update.
I've included in your packets the town's approved Source Protection Plan Letter. Next update is due in 2025. Two items remaining to finalize our O and M manual. This includes a copy of our water system log sheets and a standard operating procedure for our SCADA sys, if our SCADA system were to go down. I have a meeting with DeBois and King and Vermont Rural Water to finalize their submittal to the state. Goal is to have this done by our next meeting in August, and I spoke to the state about this. We all seem to be on the same timeline with it. So they're happy we're moving forward, and DeBois and King is on track of what their expectations are.
Thank you. Plus B Certification Submittal for System Operators.
I've, I've written letters of recommendation for Nick and Rob, who are our two operators in training and have been since 2020. Full applications for their water certifications were going to go in the mail today, but they told me that I could submit them online, so I'll do that in the morning to expedite the process so that we're operating with licensed water operators.
Anybody have any questions on the water? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Willow Street Project Start.
Many of you have probably seen or even heard that a construction road has been put in on Eden Avenue to get down to the bottom of the Garden of Eden, which I've heard it called, to put a bore under the railroad and to go back up through. We have our first construction meeting on August 1st, and everything's been going pretty smooth, I believe, so.
I did notice under the underpass where the big orange tub things were to keep people because of the bank where it had kind of caked in, are over the bank?
Yeah.
And I'm guessing it's probably from all of the traffic going back and forth now with the construction, they just kind of.
Funny story, I got a call on that Friday, and I went down there just instead of calling the DPW guys, just to pick them up before I went home, and it was more of a task than I thought because I had like Billy goat down there. But when I walked up, Stan was up there in his car looking down at me.
Was he?
Yeah.
Waving, saying?
Yeah. We had a nice little chat.
Okay.
They're there now, and I did tell the guys that they.
When'd you do that?
Friday evening.
Okay, because they're, yes, they're.
They're back down.
Yeah. I just think they're so, that's so close there, I think, you know?
I spoke to Kyle about that today to see when we could, we could get to it. We're going to add it to the list, and we really want to make sure that they were capable of doing it. I mean, because it is, it could be tricky there, how steep that thing is.
Right, it is. And I'm thinking even the train going by all the time probably just rocks them until they take over.
Yeah, so it's going to get done. It's going to get done.
What time is that meeting on August 1st?
I can, I can send it to you in a link.
Loan reimbursement for Willow Street.
This is a quick one. I'd, I'd just like to keep you all up to speed on this because it was something that was behind when I came on board almost a year ago. So we've submitted and received a loan reimbursement of approximately 17,000 for the Willow Street Sewer Project, so we are up to speed on seeking reimbursements for this loan, which was a bond that we voted in two years ago now.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else for the sewage commissioner?
I've got one more.
There's no more I want either.
One more.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Jump the gun.
Temporary operator for wastewater treatment plant. This was an, this is an important one because I know people are curious. So I've been working closely with the state and the Rural Water Association. They, they have been incredible to work with, by the way. I mean, starting last week, they've been here almost every day, if not every, you know, every other day. So according to the, to the Agency of Natural Resources, the town has six months to obtain a chief operator. Until then, we can hire someone to manage the plant for eight hours a week. The person has to be intimately familiar with Proctor's wastewater facility and a competent operator. And I think we found someone, so we're going to, we're talking, we're talking more about them following this session.
Okay.
Now you can move on.
Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and into the regular Select Board meeting? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Managers Report, the Intern Zoning Administrator Duties.
So I actually interviewed somebody for the zoning administrator position last week.
Wow.
Yeah, oh man. And so they sent me their resume and their cover letter. I'm going to forward that to the Planning Commission. I've asked them to come to the Planning Commission so that the PC can nominate them for appointment to the board at our next meeting. So good news.
Excellent.
It's good news. Did you find a health officer yet?
No. Working on it.
Yeah, sure you are. All right, Assistant Town Clerk and Treasurer Sir.
We have five interviews this week, so Celia and I are going to be pretty busy. All the applicants look really good on paper, and we're excited about the interviews.
Pool Report.
All right, and despite the challenges, I've received almost nothing but positive feedback about the pool. And we already mentioned this in Good Stuff. I've got the pool reports in your packets, and Gannon and I have already kind of started talking about next year, which gives me a lot of hope. And, and we think we'd like to start lessons up again. You know, we're thinking maybe twice a year, we, we make sure everybody signed up ahead of time. And it, that'll be something we work through when we get there. So it's, it's very encouraging that he's talking already about next year because he's been doing a great job this year.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
Some days with good numbers.
Mm-hmm, and they were busy this, Lisi, they were busy last weekend, huh?
They were.
All right, Compensation Survey.
So VLCT gives us a compensation survey so that we can kind of weigh our salaries to the rest of the states, and Celia and I have to do that this week. So Celia and I, she's going to be getting a lot of Michael time in.
End of Fiscal Year Closeout and the Audit.
As I've mentioned, our auditors will be returning in August, August to go over the deliverables assigned to our last meeting. A lot of what I have to do is just asset management, and Celia's doing the more accounting and treasurer business.
Stormwater RFP Review and the Matrix Submittal.
So the committee decided to award the project to Watershed Consulting out of Burlington. Both firms had applied were capable, but Watershed Consulting won by nose because they included offering a virtual community-wide visioning meeting and the design of a story map. So, so more community involvement is what drove us toward them. And then this, when we start getting into the planning and implementation phase, I found throughout my career in public service, a lot of people see water going down into the drain, and they don't know where it even goes after that. So it's just kind of an educational opportunity so that when we start putting these things in, you know, they can say, oh, that's not just a rain, you know, garden, oh, that's a rain garden, you know? So, so we support that.
Thank you. All right. Town Hall Renovation Upgrades.
After performing the virtual audit for the work done to Town Hall through the CBPG Funds, we have been given our results. I'm pleased to say that the state gave the town positive feedback. Full report is included in your packets. The only suggestion given was that our next project, we should make a better attempt at reaching out to minority and women-owned businesses. And just as a reminder, and a positive step in the right direction, the affirmative action has been included in our most recent updated procurement policy.
That was a good report.
Oh, yeah. I was pleasantly surprised when it came in.
Yeah.
And a lot of that had to do with, I mean, Stan kept everything.
Right.
So, so that's helpful.
All right. Parks and Rec Bottle Drive to Fund the Playground Amenities.
Yep, so we, yeah, didn't have a forum at our last meeting, but, but, so Brian and I kind of spoke a little bit about this, and I know Megan's mentioned in the past that we want to have a bottle drive to fund the amenities for the new park over there, so mulch and then maybe a bench. I haven't heard anything about when it's going to happen, but I've been saving up bottles.
Okay, yeah, I think there was a date, yeah.
Okay. When it, when I know about the date, I'll let everybody know. She did really well on the last one, I think.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
And next we have the Casella Fuel Surcharges and CPI Annual Increase. So Casella bills have increased, the CPI, which is just accounts for inflation, so that's gone up about 5%, which adds about 400 bucks for a baseline, and that's per month. And then we're still seeing a surcharge for fuel. I'm hoping that continues to go down. It's been hopeful to see it at the pumps lately, but until that date, we're going to continue doing that, you know? So our last surcharge for fuel was about 1,600, on top of that 400 stacked on, we're looking at 2,000 a month, 2,000 times 12, the number gets pretty big. So it's just something we're going to have to be very cognant of, cognizant of this fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand like the fuel, I couldn't understand the disposal fees going up and comparing it to the CPI because I just don't get that piece of it.
Well, and they had, they had gone up the year I started just because they were not charging us for recycling, but then they weren't finding that profitable, so that went up, too.
Right.
And I don't have a, Celia got stuck in a brainstorming session with me, you know, trying to figure out how could we reduce that cost? And I, I had come up with the idea of just brainstorming, of maybe having the transfer station open for recycling, but even if you did that, would people, people would probably just throw it in the regular trash, you know? And then, so your tonnage would be the same. And it'd be nice if people had compost bins, but, you know, that would be a whole initiative. So, yeah, I don't see a clear path out of the deficit.
You give something, you can't take it away. I guess, I just have a hard time with them as far as like, you know, it's, it's like any revenue for curbside collection goes to them and any expense comes to us. And yet we're already paying them a contracted price. It's just kind of.
Yeah.
I just feel like they're, sorry, nickel and diming us on every single thing.
Yeah, and if it went up 5% last year, then it's probably going up 5% next year, so that'll be a, a 10% increase that we're having to budget for next year, so. On a good note, I haven't had a whole lot of phone calls on trash days lately, but we're paying for it.
Okay. All right. Complaints About Swift Trucks Through Town.
You know, I, I noticed a bunch of 18-wheelers coming through town. Well, anyone would know, I, I don't really notice things like that, unfortunately, but it was brought to my attention, and then my eye was drawn towards it. We had some 18-wheelers driving through town, and they all had Swift written on them. And then we even had a fire, we had a, a fire department call down on Gorm Bridge Road, and one was stopped by our truck that was parked on Meadow Street. Almost right in front of your house. So I reached out to OMEA about it, and they think it is odd that it's just Swift trucks, but I'm telling you, it's like one or two a day, and it's only Swift. So there were different theories to it. Maybe it was because they were doing the paving in Pittsburgh, but that doesn't make a lot of sense because, so the person I spoke to at OMEA was Dan Furliet, Furliet? Furliet?
Furliet.
Furliet, yeah, on Kane Street, I think. But, and he offered me a tour. But, so that, he told me that they can't get through the bridge, the covered bridge. They don't fit, so.
Once, they, they were the ones.
Oh, is that right?
One time.
Top off the bridge, anybody can go there.
So I don't think, so the Pittsburgh theory, paving theory doesn't, doesn't add up.
I think it's just the GPA, they think they're just directed here, and because I, when I was going to work one morning, one was parked out in front of the bank, and he was just stopped, and he was like, you could tell he was like, I don't know where the guy.
We think maybe Swift isn't providing their truckers with commercial GPS units, and maybe they're using.
Other phones.
Yeah, their phones, and it's just taking them wherever. So he.
So they don't live up to their name? Not to Swift.
So I'll, so he's going to follow up with them. I did find out one kind of neat thing about OMEA, and you all probably know this, but they have every, twice a year, they have like a community, oh, I forgot what it's called. It's not the Community Complaint Meeting, but it's like a Community Feedback Meeting.
Yeah.
So. Is that right? So I'll try to make an effort to go to that, because that's usually the only big thing I hear about in town, is every once in a while, a truck will sneak up here, but the last couple of weeks was Swift, it's been, it's been bad. So that concludes my manager's report. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the trucks then? And I'm surprised they didn't bring it up when the sheriff was here. How many of them were ticketed?
Well, I.
That was the essence of those beautiful signs we have, have a triangle that when trucks come down here, that the sheriff will be called and they will be ticketed. So if five trucks are here, how many trucks are ticketed?
I've never seen a commercial truck pulled over being ticketed in the state, ever, in my tenure here. Well, I didn't chase him down or call the cops, so, yeah, I can call, so that, you got me on that one, Miss Myzer, but I'll, I'll make sure to make it a point in the future to kind of do that.
I mean, I think the only avenue to take in that point unless he's here or we catch him is just to report.
Yeah, I did think about chasing one.
To him and say, they're all on OMEA trucks, you know?
Yeah.
Try to.
But Swift trucks not allowed to be here or something? Like, what's the problem with the, like, a truck's not allowed, a commercial truck's not allowed to pass through here, or they're stopping places, or what's?
Well, like 18-wheelers can't come through here, there's no way to get out of here.
Okay, they're coming through downtown.
Yeah, they're not supposed to come through downtown. Yeah, yeah.
So I thought in the past, when they were down here, license numbers were taken and turned in to the sheriff. I, I just, I ask this question because we put up the signs, and as of the day, I know of three trucks that have been ticketed that have been down here. And how, when did the signs go up, Mr. Hogan?
It must be four years ago.
So, so in four years, we've talked about less than five trucks that have been ticketed, and at least one of them that was taken in, the information was taken. And at least one of them that was taken, the information was taken and given to the sheriff. And that's how they received it. So it's perplexing to me to think that we're kind of talking about this while we're down here.
Well, my attempt was to reach out to Omea. And you're right, I can take another step and reach out to the sheriff, which I do intend to take your feedback seriously and do that.
Well, I think the other issue is, and we had this conversation several years ago, and this is a problem with the county, the regional county commission, that they do not designate this route between Proctor, through Proctor to Pittsburgh, as a bypass. And that's exactly what it is, is a bypass.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be interesting to know, for someone to set and count the number of semis that go through our town. I think you would be astounded--
It's all day. Yeah, we're on East Street, and it's all day. It's like every, every couple of minutes, that 18-wheeler comes through.
We do under three--
Even through the night, a lot of them are overweight, too.
It just seems odd. We put up these god-awful signs, and the only people that suffer are those of us who have to look at them every day. And they still are, they offend on a regular basis.
You have a comment?
May I?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you. I have two comments. First one on topic. The best, if you see a truck in this area here, the best place to call is Omea. Call the shipping department. And when that truck finally gets there, they will hold it, and they will be lashed below. That's pretty expensive to come in. They do spend, only spend in excess of $70,000 a year on local enforcement around the plant. And our roads coming in, could encourage these trucks. There's conversations going on in Montpelier as to the legality of a trucker's GPS. Currently, there are no approved GPS with whiteout highways for truckers. So they're using their devices. That's how they get lost down here. The penalties are really severe. I know across, kind of, through West Rutland, penalties, mine's like eight or nine thousand dollars for being overweight on a highway. So it's a, it is a problem. There should be no problem with Swift. Swift is a contract employer. And they, they know the work. So they're just, so if you get to the team meeting, you'll be, you'll get astounded at how much effort is put into that. And we will talk about it now, but there's, but the big thing is, is if we could ever get a, the Department of Motor Vehicles is working on a blank-out GPS that we could require. And we talked about that, and we put the signs up.
Yep.
We talked about a lot of things with the service.
And because, yeah, because there's nothing readily available for that current, particularly will be helping with these, these issues. But the truckers should not be down here at all when these things. So that's, that's my comment. But I do have one interesting comment, if you want, from Jared. And you, it's your fault. You mentioned trains. And I want to remind everybody, the Amtrak starts service at 29 minutes a month. They'll leave, their first one is South Town. They'll be at speed when we come through, which is anywhere, I'm not sure what they do about the undergas here, but anywhere from 40 to 60 miles an hour coming from town. It should, they leave Burlington at 10:10, and they arrive in Rutland at 12:10. So it should be coming through here, I would suspect, about 11:45. And that's a, that's a concrete schedule. We'll see that just about every day. Seven days a week. So that's happening, happening on Friday. The return trips back through, from New York back up to Burlington, they leave Rutland at 7:46 in the evening, or 8:00. So that should put them here 8:10, when they're going through here. Fortunately, when you're asleep, when you blow a cross in your head, and they'll be at speed again. So they'll be quick. Just caution our neighbors that anytime it's train time, but you cannot hear an Amtrak train.
So they used to move a lot faster than the other trains?
Wait, freight's, freight's for here, 1:00 or 2:00.
Somebody's gonna get run over in it.
Well, yeah. We've done an Amtrak from Rutland to Albany and to New York for, you know, 10 years now. But yet, people have to be aware. You cannot hear an Amtrak train at all.
Yeah.
Just, it's a PSA.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
I've seen some trucks docked up at Omea, and I always wondered what's going on. And I think they were being made to leave late last or something like that.
Okay. Discussion and action items. Everyone, files, kind of? Sheriff's report. Is there any questions on Sheriff's report? Other topics, authorize town manager to sign facility use agreements. I believe we talked about this once before, but probably never made a motion to that effect. So is there a motion to grant the town manager authority to approve facility use agreements?
So--
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion granted. Mortar Proctor applications.
So I don't have applications in your packets. Prior to the last couple of weeks, to the events of the last couple of weeks, I was working with Brent. Because when I first got here, I was talking about maybe replacing the entrance signs. Especially since Cameron Canucci, their new friend, that's hanging out at the shop. It looks incredible. I thought it would be an opportune time to kind of start that conversation again. I've got to get some measurements for Brent before we do it. I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to wrap that all together in the next week, or the next four days. I'd also like a little bit more community involvement in that. So I was thinking I'd go through, like, our yard. So when we get into this, December will be the next application phase. You know, around October, I would love maybe to come to one of your meetings and see what you all would like. Brent, actually, and Lisa Mizer showed me a photo of the sign once being Verdi antique. And that's what, actually, without bringing it up, that's what Brent was talking about in a Verdi antique sign there, instead of the white marble. Because he said white marble's gotten really expensive anyway. So, so instead of that, I know a couple of meetings ago, we talked about funding another radar sign along East Street with some mortar and proctor funds. And I was just gonna get your thoughts on that. And I could definitely get bids for that in the next four days and have an application submitted.
When, when are the funds awarded? I mean, if it's good, it'll be in the winter.
Yeah.
Probably in, if you need it in August, they'll, they'll let you know.
Then we should have time.
I'm not sure if this is something that they've, I'm not sure if they've awarded an item like this in the past. But--
Is that a permanent one?
It'd be not a permanent one.
The one up the, North Street isn't though, right?
That belongs to the shit, one on every street.
Will that be moved again? Like, I'm just thinking, because I think we talked about it once, about having it at the bottom of the hill, rather than the top of the hill.
Okay.
Because cars fly up the hill. Still, they don't care that that's up there, because it's not reading their speed limit, so.
They have a list that you can get on. So what I can do is reach out to them and see if they'll swap it for us for a little while and put it going uphill.
I mean, that would be, yeah, it might just sound a little--
Well--
That machine records. Could we get a printout, see what speeds--
Oh, yeah, I can ask them for that.
So this, does it like takes license tags and gives speeds? And you can just like look at it?
I think it gives tag information, but it does document speeds. So you know, like, what the average speed is going through there, and top speed.
Is this part of this like Streets Initiative thing? This whatever the, I forget what it's called?
You mean on North Street?
I'm just, I'm saying that like the town, like they have some type of Streets Initiative estate and the government. I'm just like, and we talked about it at the other meeting. And I'm just wondering if this is part of that, because I see every town is doing the exact same thing and putting up these signs. I'm wondering, I really don't care to be like every other town, but you know, it's not to me. I'm just like, and I'm just wondering if it's part of this whole grand Streets Initiative.
Not here, was it?
Yeah. Strange it's happening in every other town. It seems like the same.
Well, speeding's an issue in almost every town in America, I imagine. So they, you know, we're just, this is, this seems to be some type of solution, maybe. If anything, you can collect data. But I get a lot of reports speeding down Route 3, a lot.
Well, it's almost like if you have a sports car, you can go out, or the state cops are down at 2:00 or 4:00 AM or something. You have a timeline where you can pretty much go out at 7:00, and just like, near the floor, and go all you want. And people do. You can hear them roaring out there.
So, so yeah, I guess I was just looking for everyone's thoughts on that. Because, you know, it was brought up in a meeting before, and then I don't want to buy a sign that we don't want to put up.
I don't think it hurts to ask. I think--
Someone had also approached, someone about wanting to get more proctor funds, hopefully, or something. But they were looking to build, construct flower boxes for the Marble Bridge as a winter project.
They'd go on the outs, like the outside?
Yeah, but they'd have to be obviously built in certain ways, structured, bracketed, so they couldn't be taken off or, you know.
That'd be nice.
So it's probably something I think I would address when we meet in our yard.
I don't know if that'd be a good idea with a white marble bridge.
Yeah.
I'd be worried about speeding the marble.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they're made out of the right product, I don't think they'd impact the marble.
Wait and see the design first.
What about replacing trees in the park? We've talked about that several times, and we've seen the cut trees, but we're not replacing them. Pretty soon, we're gonna be in the park, and we're not gonna have any trees. And some of the trees we did plant are crooked.
Especially on the left side of the gazebo. It's kind of barren now.
Yeah, I was thinking about--
Big trees that were taken down.
These trees don't look great coming--
Well, there are trees in the park that those pines need. They're just dying from the bottom off. So eventually, that's just gonna be a safety issue.
I could do signs on trees.
Maybe Mr. McCollum will plant a tree for anybody he takes down.
Why don't you shoot for some trees in the spring?
I don't know. You gotta meet Mr. McCollum and see what he-- So.
Shoot for the trees in the spring, huh?
Be something to consider.
Yeah, we might go get some trees from the conservation district or something.
Yeah, you don't get good trees. That's what we have such a crappy trees that you're cutting down now, that are in the town right away. Particularly in Jodden Park, different places. That's what they gave from the Boy Scouts planted when Ben's father was a child. They're not good trees.
Which was a long time.
They're not good trees.
Rutland planted tons of trees this year.
Really?
A lot.
Were they, I mean, were they already kind of tree-looking when they put them in the ground? Like, or were they just--
They look like trees. I would say they're probably 10 feet high.
Oh, really?
Yeah, with a base, it's like, yeah.
Be a feature.
The only thing I'd want to be careful of is the placement of them, you know, you want--
Well, the park seems like they're pretty easy. They should, well--
You get a lot of calls.
You get a lot of calls.
Yeah, but, well, some, I don't want, I would hate to plant trees over there, and then someone would say, well, why would you plant a tree there? You know, like--
Couldn't get that anywhere.
You want some kind of design. Like, do you want a design, like, do you want to do a park design where you have, because usually when you, when you hire like a landscape architect, they'll give you a design on where your trees are gonna go. So you can say, oh, that looks nice before you, you know, plant them in there for 200 years.
Well, the key would be not to plant them, I guess, between the lights. I don't think it's gonna tinkle. The trees that need to come down, you could plant the trees there.
That's true.
Yeah.
So--
I trust Lisi.
This beautiful gentleman over here mentioned there was grants available.
Yeah.
Isn't there some way that, you have a beautiful park. Why can't it be spruced up, and we can maybe get some grant money for that?
That's what this is, we're in.
That's worth it.
Yeah. And I, you know, go figure, I actually had a meeting with Devin Neary a couple of weeks ago. I actually went to go--
Oh, the parking ride.
Congratulate, for, well, for one, well, this was before the parking ride. And I went to go congratulate him on his movement up to executive director of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And, you know, Proctor has done a lot of planning over the last 10 or 15 years, and all of that has come to fruition. So, you know, towns start suffering from planning fatigue. So I thought maybe, you know, not to, I don't want to call this low-hanging fruit, but when we start our Stormwater Master Plan, it's easy to integrate those type of practices into an architectural design. And that could play into the parks. So we would, we would have easily available funding through Stormwater to do something like that. But in the meantime, I'm always looking out for grants to kind of, to do neat projects. So maybe we--
Yeah, not necessarily just trees. You could have a beautiful marble walkway, something.
Yeah, I went to get my bicycle repaired two weeks in Rutland. Someone said it'd be a good idea to put a skate park over there.
Hmm.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying. A lot of people have different ideas for the parks.
Is that--
Yeah, oh, no kidding. So don't worry, don't worry, I didn't submit anything for it.
We was at the rink, and VLCT was not our friend when that situation came up, so.
So maybe we haul off on trees, but, you know how to do it.
Send our forester to you.
I mean, spring would be the best time to plant them anyway.
You're right, spring is the best time to plant.
But think about it in a position, plenty of time to think about these things for the future.
Speed sign, did we decide on that? I suggest we wait and see how the first one works, if it does anything for us, before we put more signs up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
That's good.
Yeah. That's why, invest more money in the services first. Okay, RFQ review for engineering services. We're looking for a motion to approve and issue a request for qualifications for consultant services to assist with engineering tasks.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Is there anything further for discussion? Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss employment of a public officer, 1 VSA 313A3?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Go into executive session.